Standing loss ratio and it's because of employees of many out of county, their dedication to safety and loss control that we're able to keep our rates down and our contributions at a low level because everybody likes lower insurance premiums, right? So, but no, it's all about the safety and healthy employees. And the work that they've done is just being recognized by the state and want to present this. And I know you're on the Safety Committee, I believe.
Right.
Yep, so very active and just want to thank everybody, all the employees and congratulate them all on their hard work, so thank you, John.
With that, we'll move on to routine business. Item number one is a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number two is consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Removed, second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Kerski.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Heiburger. Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next is our opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on something that is not on our agenda this morning? Okay, we know we're moving, we will move on to regular business. Item number 10 is a briefing on the proposed tax increment financing district number 26. Good morning, Dustin.
Good morning, planning commission Dustin Towers with the city of Sioux Falls planning and development services department. Scroll down with the presentation here. So today I'm going to share with you a request for tax increment financing to support the development of an accessible housing development project in Sioux Falls. Kelly Nielsen with Nielsen Developments is the applicant and the developer and city staff has worked with them to kind of bring this concept forward. It's a new concept to the city of Sioux Falls of targeting affordable housing and tax increment planning. So the city, along with our partners, have the Accessible Housing Advisory Board, which is a partnership and a collaboration with the city of Sioux Falls and many counties in county as well as the school districts. That Accessible Housing Advisory Board established the 2026 Housing Action Plan and that laid out really the necessary steps to help combat accessible housing needs in Sioux Falls. One of those actions was to establish TIF guidelines in which we could support the creation of new accessible housing units in the city. Accessible housing, you know, for the purposes of TIF or what I'm sharing here today is really defined as the availability of housing options sort of varied price points, focused on those price points being between 60% and 100% of the first time homebuyer price, maximum price that's set by the South Dakota Housing Development Authority. Today, that maximum price is at $340,000. So when we talk about 60 to 100% of that, we're targeting homes between $204,000 and $340,000. Really, the principles that kind of guided the Ahab discussion and guidelines for TIF were to target those various price points as well as working within the existing housing market, but also integrating the new housing that we would be creating into neighborhood. So instead of just building standalone projects, how can we incorporate these in with development? And what you'll see on a couple of the slides is just kind of the area that we're talking about. And ultimately, Nielsen Development is developing 95 acres as part of this area, but the TIF district and the accessible housing units are centered in a 10 acres area of that. So again, incorporating that in with the rest of the development that they're already creating in the area. When the Accessible Housing Advisory Board looked at, you know, how we were going to utilize TIF, so on the screen you can see some of the guidelines, we would use the proceeds to support the infrastructure development of the area. South Dakota Codified Law doesn't allow us to build homes or residential structures with tax increment financing, but it does allow us to do the site improvements, so the infrastructure, prepare the area for developments. We wanted the developer to build the homes all within five years, having a varied price points, and then also trying to maintain that level of affordability for a period of time, so we would be placing restrictive covenants on the property that would be on the developer as well as the future property owners for five years after their original purchase. Those requirements would be that it needs to be a primary residence, we're not renting these properties. And then ultimately, if the new buyer were to want to sell that property within the first five years after buying it from Nielsen Development, they would only be able to sell it for the original purchase price plus the housing price index so that, you know, the price doesn't jump on property like this. So when we look at the proposed tax increment district, again, this is 9.7 acres. The location of this project is Madison Street and Veterans Parkway, so on the east side of town. It's a $20 million plus dollar development that'll build 65 single family homes. The TIF request is for $2.14 million. Again, that would be going to the site work, infrastructure, utilities, as well as the fees associated with the development. And then ultimately, when we look at this property today, there's only a few hundred dollars in property taxes generated in this 10 acres because it's agricultural land. Following the development of these homes, we'll be generating over $300,000 in property taxes, which will ultimately go to support and pay back the TIF request, and then ultimately the new revenue generated for the taxing entities following the dissolution of the TIF district. Looking at the project details, what you'll see here again is there's 65 single family homes that are being built. There's three different unit types labeled A, B, and C on the screen. A and B are 39 single family lots, and we'll show you what those units will look like. And then there are 13 twin home lots, which totals 26 single family homes along the east and south side, or west and south side of the development. When we were meeting with Nielsen Development and trying to figure out how we wanted to make this work, we were also reviewing codified laws relates to TIF. If all of the homes are priced below first time homebuyer pricing set by the South Dakota Housing Development Authority, codified law considers it an affordable housing project. And so ultimately, that helps us define how we work through the TIF and at this point in time, all of these units are below that first time homebuyer pricing. So to look at the three different unit types, this is unit type A, so we are looking at a 978 square foot home, two bedroom, one bath, one stall garage. We are preparing these with two stall driveways, but these are slab on grade, no lower level, and the goal is to be at or below $232,000 for this new construction. Unit type B is a little bit larger concept, 1,400 square feet, three bedrooms, two bath. Again, one stall garage allows for, again, two stall driveway to accommodate the parking needs for the home. And then the goal for these is to be at 308 or below, and again, no lower level on these. The last unit type is unit type C, which is a little over 1,000 square foot, one home. These do have two bedrooms, two bath with a two stall garage, and there is a unfinished basement associated with these, so there is the ability to finish out another two bedrooms, one bath in the basement. Again, the goal for these is to be at 323 or below. So when we look at those three different concepts, unit A is at about 68% of the first time homebuyer price, unit B is at 90% of first time homebuyer price, and then unit C is at 95% of the first time homebuyer pricing. So here's just kind of a rendering of what the area of the neighborhood would look like. As you can see, we're looking from the east to the west. So on the very top of the screen, you can see the twin homes, and then in the core of the area, you can see the slab on grade homes that will be developed as part of the project. We typically focus our evaluation on three areas, the significance of the project and the impact, specifically with this one, on the creation of accessible housing units for the city of Sioux Falls. We look at the anticipated financial need of this request by reducing the prices of the homes, and then ultimately, the eligible expenses, which is all of the infrastructure improvement and site prep to develop this site. Overall, we are bringing this forward because we believe all of those areas are supported, and ultimately, it significantly adds accessible housing units to the city and meets several objectives of the 2021 Housing Needs Assessment that was completed as well as the 2026 Housing Action Plan. A few of the other things that we worked with the developer on as it relates to that Housing Action Plan, there were guidelines that were established for TIF, which is one of the actions, but a few of the other actions was how can we make these sites and areas more affordable to develop? We did, we have a rezoning coming forward that was approved by our planning commission going to city council in the next few weeks that actually rezoned this to a residential cluster district, which actually allows more, did not allow smaller residential lots, so create more density in an area, which makes them, again, those lots more affordable for purchase. And then we also worked with our public works department on, because it's being rezoned to that more dense neighborhood, reducing our red wave requirements. So instead of 60 feet of red wave, we're requiring 50 feet of red wave, which again allows more dense and more units per acre on average. It looks, based off this, we get about 6.7 units per acre, a typical of housing development that Nielsen Development would develop, or based on our zoning requirements, would be almost seven units per acre. So again, we're getting almost two, two and a half, three more units per acre by doing a more dense development, which again, helps the affordability of the project. Where we're at with our process, so September 7th, we went in front of our planning commission. They did recommend approval of the project plan to our city council. We were actually at the Accessible Housing Advisory Board that morning, and they also made a recommendation of approval for the tax increment finance district. We are here today, 20th of September, and our goal would be to bring this information forward to our city councilors in October for their consideration. So with that, I'll introduce to my left over here, we do have Logan Penfield, who is the housing development manager for the city, as well as Jeff Eckoff, which is our director of planning and development services, who are here to answer the questions that we have.
Thanks, Dustin. Are there questions for Commissioner Bender?
I don't really have a question. I just, I'm the county liaison to the Accessible Housing Board, so I sit on that group, and I really want to commend the city for their leadership in this. This has been, you know, you get these, these kinds of proposals and when you're part of the listening audience, sometimes you just think they magically appear, or that somebody just kind of throws something out, and this is, this is probably several years' worth of work and a lot of listening and a lot of going out and seeing what other communities have done. I think this is a really creative and great use of TIF because housing is definitely, affordable housing is a huge need in our community, and it's a difficult not to crack. I mean, it's a difficult problem to address. So the things, the creative thinking that the city has done for this, you know, new cluster zoning that allows the higher density, but single family housing, I think is great, but being creative about the infrastructure and, you know, a little bit narrower roads and things like that really helps get this done. And I think Kelly Nielsen has been a good partner in helping, along with others, but in helping kind of come up with creative ideas. So, you know, when you look at this and you think about our market right now and how costs have kind of escalated so rapidly to be able to get these, these kinds of, this kind of housing at the price points that he's looking at, for the old people in the room like myself, those numbers seem kind of astronomical and breathtaking that that's what affordable housing is these days, that is where it is. So I'm very supportive of this, and the Accessible Housing Board was also very supportive of it.
Commissioner, Kerski.
Two things, I have a statement, a request for the future. I too am supportive of this, and it does give creative thinking to do it. If we see something like this in the future, I think about my first home, it was a split foyer home with an unfinished basement, and a lot of my neighbors didn't even have garages, but we all had the opportunity to improve or expand on. I don't see that here. Basically, you're getting a very nice home, but you don't have the opportunity to maybe improve it by finishing the basement or, so, you know, future projects, I think it would be something worth considering when you look at that type of thing. Did the math, and if, if this TIF wasn't on these, these homes would be about $33,000 more just for the development costs. Is that, is that appropriate?
Yeah, based on, you know, the lower end units are actually probably making up more than that, and the twin homes are a little closer to the pricing, but they're still, you average it out, you have roughly $30,000.
Reducing the cost of home, but what's the impact on the TIF? I mean, if it's 300 grand a year and 2.1 million, mathematically, it would be seven years. Is that pretty close or?
It's going to be more, about 15 years, because we have a couple of different things with that. Not 65 homes aren't built in a day.
Oh, okay.
It's going to take about four to five years to build, about, average, about 15 to 20 homes a year. So, you know, after the first, you know, year, we won't actually probably start collecting taxes on the first homes that are built, you know, until three years from now. So ultimately, that already delays it that much. And then we are, in addition to the 2.1 billion dollar request for the infrastructure, as with most of our TIFs, we pay for the financing costs of that, so there is an addit to that. So we're, we're more likely paying out roughly close to three, a little under three million in terms of projects.
About building 65 homes, so the next 90 days are ahead.
So ultimately, our projections show about 15 years payback.
Thank you.
Commissioner Barth.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dustin, the city's lucky to have you. I remember when you were working on our side, and those were good days. So what about other efforts? Are we, you know, the people that have substandard homes or crumbling homes in the city, is there an effort to help them as well at this point?
Yeah, absolutely. I know we have a number of different programs, maybe I'll ask you there, Logan, to come up and speak to some of those programs.
Good morning. Yeah, the city does. Predominantly, we use our CDVG dollars, Community Development Lot Grant Dollars that come from HUD annually. We just actually got our 2022 Action Plan approval, it's about a million dollars for the next four months. And we do single family housing rehabilitation programs, which, excuse me, so the city, what they do is we go out and individuals, 80% AMI or less can request a home rehabilitation loan. Those are generally up to 30,000, we can go a little bit higher, but they're deferred loans with 0% interest that are, we recoup those funds at the time of the sale, so there's no extra payment on the house. What those go into is, is standard home repairs. So if you need a new roof, if there's some exterior issues, insulation issues, heating, cooling, more base things to make sure that the houses don't fall into dilapidation, that is what we try to use those dollars for. And so I would say roughly 85% of all our CDVG funds annually are directed toward that program. Thank you.
Commissioner Benega.
My favorite subject is some of the city fees that go along with some of the projects, specifically platting fees. Tell me a little bit about how the city's going to adjust those when, frankly, the county's participation in this is a great program and I will support it, but the real issue is we have flat property taxes on those, the length of the TIF, but there are other fees that the homeowner is going to have to pay. Are those being reduced, or are those being adjusted based on, frankly, the value of the homes?
So ultimately, the platting fees are one of those fees that we charge the developer to actually plat these lots, and they are on the developer, but typically, those are transferred to the property and then sold to the property. That's one of the ways where we're helping reduce these costs, is paying for the infrastructure, but we're also paying for the platting fees and some of those building fees, other things that are associated with it. So the TIF is actually paying down those things, so again, that's how we're, we're really lowering the cost of these. If you think about it, if the city's paying, or through the TIF, if we're all paying through the TIF with the infrastructure cost, all the upfront development costs, right, the platting fees, the design cost, all of those things that are upfront, typically then get placed on a, divided, and that's added to your lot purchase price as part of a home. All of that's essentially, or majority of that's being taken out based on using tax increment financing. And so that's less cost going on to the buyer in the long run.
I think this is a great idea, but everybody has to have a pet peeve, and platting fees are mine. So I would love to see the difference in what the normal platting fees would have been versus what they are on this kind of project.
Well, maybe I misunderstood, but you're not reducing the platting fees, you're just paying for them through the TIF money.
Yes, it's a reverse.
Correct. So they're not, they're not, so the money's coming out of the TIF money. There's no reduction in it.
One of the actions, or topics on the 2026 Housing Action Plan is to continue to have that conversation and see if there's other means for us to be looking at those types of elements. At this point in time for this project, the taxing from financing is what's reducing those expenses.
Okay. Commissioner Barth.
Well, luckily, you won't have this cranky commissioner around for too much longer, but this platting fee thing's really bugs me because people out in the county that cannot vote for the mayor or the city council, cannot vote for the bureaucrats in the city, are being asked to pay platting fees, and that's so totally unfair, taxes without representation. And that's one issue. The other thing I was going to say is, and I'm, so I'm in agreement with Gerald here, I'm also in agreement with Commissioner Bender on the cost of homes. I apparently am much more wealthy than I thought earlier today. I fixed a phone for a guy who bought a house in 1951 for $13,000, and he wondered how he would ever pay for it. Well, now it's probably worth $500,000 and it's paid for. But, so these are things. One more item. There are 12 items on today's agenda for us where we're abating the taxes on properties that the city owns. What's going on? Every time you guys take over a property, our revenue goes down, and somebody's got to pay these taxes. Is it, is it what, the school system? Oh, no. They're also got a couple of properties that are not going to pay any more taxes, plus all the acres that you guys own out in the county. What's going on?
Commissioner Barth, let's get back on topic. Thank you for your comments. Dustin, I do have a couple of comments on it, and thank you for the work you've done on, because I know it's huge, and it is wonderful to see all these homes in there. Since we're going to have less space in your yard, I'm sure the city has worked on planning a park close by, and I'm also concerned about a storm shelter when you've got all these on slabs. And so are those some of the things that, I know they're not right in this, but will they be associating those close, excuse me, close by in that vicinity, storm shelters and parks for families?
You know, we don't, we don't necessarily have a plan right now in terms of storm shelters. I mean, if we look at the types of constructions that are happening elsewhere in the city, slab on grade construction has been pretty common construction, and we haven't necessarily taken an active approach with that. I mean, it's something that I think we've heard a couple of times with this, and we can definitely look at that. And then in terms of parks, you know, our goal is, at the city, is to have a, with, as the city grows, we try to get, you know, parks within a certain amount of radius for every neighborhood and every housing. So again, we'll still be working with our Parks Department on those, maintaining those goals as we continue to expand the limits of the city of Sioux Falls.
Okay. I got one more question. Will any of these homes be able to be pre-purchased so that the homeowner could purchase the house before it's built and maybe pick paint colors or carpet colors? Are they going to all be after build?
Yeah, we haven't, we're still finalizing the details of the development agreement, so I do think that there's a, that question hasn't come up yet, so I don't have a good answer for you right now, but it is something if, if I think the developer starts to hear, you know, people wanting to look at these and pre-purchasing, because in the standard housing development, that's kind of a, you know, something that's happening a lot right now. So I do think that it'll be, it'll be something we would allow, we wouldn't necessarily prohibit that from happening.
Okay. Thank you. I don't think we have any other comments. Thank you for your presentation, and we look forward to seeing this move forward and maybe more projects like this in the future. So, that's Dustin. We'll move on to item number 11, which is a hearing to consider the recession of tax payment plan resolutions. Good morning, Mr.
Morning, Commissioner Dan Frank, Attorney's Office. Yes, I have for you a request to rescind two tax payment plans. These tax payment plans are approved in either 2019 or 2020. We're technically supposed to be completed, in first case, by September 2020, and then the second one, July of 2021. Those individuals still have not completed the tax payment and not on those, the interest and fees and even the most recent taxes that continue to approve. Both of these tax payment plans just have demonstrated that the property owners have a serious intent in bringing them current, although I would say that since I've, we've served the individuals, notifying them of our intent to rescind these plans, they have called us and said they will come down to the office and make the amendment, that's yet to be seen. But in my opinion, you know, since the time period that we had given both of these properties to complete the tax payment plans has elapsed, they're still, haven't demonstrated in the willingness to make payments on those, I'm asking for the commission to rescind both of these tax payment plans.
Questions?
Who would make that motion, Madam Chair?
Second.
I have a motion and second. Are there any comments on this? Oh, we'll have a roll call vote. Oh, excuse me, Commissioner Bender.
So I'm just curious, I mean, they have paid some amounts toward this, and are, would the Auditor's Office entertain a new tax payment plan if they came in and showed interest in doing that?
I would not. They just, you know, I've worked with both of these property owners for a couple of years now, they've always made promises to pay, haven't demonstrated their ability or willingness to pay on a regular basis. I think that's history, I would not consider any tax plan. I would just ask them to find some means to bring their property taxes current.
And these houses would go up for auction after a period of time, correct?
Right. So this is just a formality for us to rescind the plan. It doesn't mean taking the action on these. It just does allow the county, at some point in the future, as we look at properties that are delinquent, to take some sort of either a tax deed option, we could do that, but this rescission in itself does not say that we could take any action, just that it freezes up taking future action.
Commissioner Kerski.
Ben, you've tried, we've tried. 99.9% of the property taxpayers in many counties pay their taxes on time and when they're due. We've done enough, this is the right thing to do. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I would say they still have time to pay them, and there'll still be another decision, but we don't want to kick anybody out of their houses, but people have to recognize you have to pay your property taxes. And that being said, the second half of property taxes is due soon, so put that on your calendar.
Yes, yeah. You know, I've communicated to these, all these property owners that I would expect the county to take any action in this year, probably would be in later part of 2023 before we start looking at taking some. So they have ample time to get themselves current. Yes.
Cancel your TV subscription if you have to, sorry. We have a motion and a second. We need a roll call vote. Barth.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Heiburger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 12 is this fiscal year 2023 final budget briefing. Susan, good morning, Susan.
Susan, good morning, Susan.
Good morning, Susan, being at the Auditor's Office. This is our last time to review and review on the fiscal year 2023 budget. We will be back next week for final review and adoption of that budget. The documents that you have before you have been updated based upon our due, our September 6 hearing for that additional safe home position that you approved last meeting. The net change for that position was roughly $34,000 of additional appropriations, and then we've adjusted interest income accordingly to offset that due to increasing interest rates. The other changes, that was the only change within the means of finance that, from September 6th to today. So this, all other funds were, remain the same. If you scroll down a few pages, you'll see the variance to the general fund budget of, one more page, oh, two more pages. This slide right here. This is the slide that reflects the changes between September 6th and today. And then with that, our initial calculation of the levies for 2023, for county levies, is on the next page. You'll see that our levies are currently estimated at just over $3, 3.068 for 2023, which is the lowest levy that we have had since 2012, which is about a 6% decrease from prior year.
Any questions for Susan? Next week we'll be approving our budget. Does anybody in the audience that wants to comment on the budget? We've had plenty of opportunity, but I don't see anybody move. Okay, thanks, Susan. Item number 13 is, oh, sorry, Commissioner Bender?
I just, I wanted to, you know, point out for the audience, because there's been a lot of attention in the press recently about crime, and, you know, once again, we have really invested heavily in our criminal justice system in this budget. I mean, most of the positions are in the juvenile justice, in the Sheriff's Department, and in the public defender and the state's attorney's offices. And so it continues to be a high priority with the county and something that we are investing heavily, heavily in, that's along with all the other programs that we do to try to keep people out of that system, so.
All right, with that, well, thank you, Commissioner Bender. With that, we'll move on to item number 13, which is authorize the chairman to sign the South Dakota Department of Transportation Utilities and Right-of-Way Certificates for Project MC 21-09, Structure 50-279-140 Rehab.
Good morning, Commissioner Jacob Mars, the Highway Department. This project is just north of Corson, about two miles, and then west, about a half mile. It was awarded by the South Dakota DOT under their big fund program here, I want to say maybe two years ago, and we're planning to reconstruct it next year. It's a, it's a deck replacement and repainting, plus some guardrails with this project involves. So these certificates just tell the DOT that we have taken on the responsibility of the right-of-way and utility relocations that may be needed. There is no right-of-way needed and no utility relocations needed, so these are good to go.
For authorization, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Jacob.
Thank you.
Next one is item number 14, consider a motion to declare multiple computers that surplus and authorize donation of the PCs for people. Monte, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Monte Wadymack, Greenham County IT. This will be about the third or fourth year that we donated our old computers to PCs for people. We used to put that equipment on the city-county auction, and since they stopped having that, it's more difficult for us to get rid of old equipment. We ran our PCs and laptops for approximately five years. By the time we take them out of service and clean the hard drives off and whatnot, they're six years old, there's really very little value to them, but they do find some use for them, so it seems like a good cause to be.
Okay. Any questions on that? We have done it for years, is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second with a roll call vote, please. Bender?
Aye.
Kersky?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger? Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Monte. Item number 15 is a briefing on the Commission Rules of Procedure.
Good morning, Tyler Flack, Commissioner's Office. So as the county continues to grow, we've noticed that our community meetings continue growing in complexity and length, and in October of last year, we started to recognize the need to document how meeting procedures ought to be. Meeting procedures are not a novel concept. Cities of Falls and Hennepin County both have similar resources as what you have in front of you today. The project, though, is an effort to give some clear guidelines for how the county commission meetings will be conducted and to ensure some consistency as the commissioners change over as the elections go on. Much of what's in this document is already installed according to state law, none of it was, that wasn't my creation. You know, as I mentioned, we see this as an important asset for a couple of main reasons, giving elected officials a good training tool to get them up to speed on how commission meetings operate, and then to give the public an understanding of how these meetings are supposed to operate as well. The document has seven unique sections, board organization, rules of general conduct, officers and staff, meetings, meeting procedures, committees, and then amendments. Our intent is to review this on an annual basis in July, which will give us some time to incorporate any legislative changes, probably most likely related to open meeting laws. And at this point, like Commissioner Heiburger says, a briefing to get some feedback and to generally direction where to go from here.
Is there any comments? Commissioner Barrett?
Well, I won't be here that much longer, and that was my final budget briefing. So, but I do question reducing the public comment to three minutes and putting it at the end of the meeting. I didn't do that, but I did stop it. So I just, I feel like it's worked pretty well for the 20 years that I've been coming to the meetings. I've already been a commissioner for 16 years, but, you know, the fact that there's been some abuse of recent times, I think, is not a reason to throw out the baby at the bathwater. I do think that restriction on using electronic devices and the idea that they should bring in any paper they want handed out ahead of time, I think those are great, but I question three minutes and at the end of the meeting.
Additional comments?
Tyler, thanks for all the hard work on this. I read through it and met with you and addressed some concerns, and they've been, you know, taken care of. I would encourage, there's at least three candidates for new people that are considering a running county commissioner or are running for county commission, read it, it is done well, it'll help you understand, and in fact, anybody that wants to, because I mess frequently. What does a county commissioner do? Here's a 22-page document that'll show you what a county commissioner does. And public comment, that's just always been a kind of a contentious issue, but I always viewed public comment as comment from the public to the commission, not comments for the public, from the public for the public, but addressed to this board. So where it is, you know, I guess to me is irrelevant. If somebody wants a format to talk to us, that's the place to do it, and it's public comment, again, for us, not just for public to hear, so.
Additional comments? Tyler, maybe you said this at the beginning, but you guys looked at a lot of other counties or looked at what they had for in place, and these aren't set in stone as far as they will be reviewed every year by future commissioners to see if there needs to be any changes, and we will continue to discuss that public comment, Commissioner Barrett. I mean, it has been one of the things we've continued to kick around, where should it be? Beginning, end, middle, you know, it's kind of been everywhere, end time, too. When I started about as long as you, not quite, we didn't even have really a time constraint on it. People rarely came and talked, and if they did, it was, you know, 30 seconds, and there does have to be a limit at some point so that we can conduct business for the county. So where that sweet spot is, we'll figure it out. So this was a briefing today, and so we will bring it back. Oh, one more thing.
I wanted to add to kind of, to the Commissioner of ours, one unique change in what's presented here is that all agenda items would have an opportunity for someone to come and address the commissioner related to that issue, so then moving it to, yeah, moving public comment to the end of the meeting offers maybe sort of a final opportunity for anyone who may have missed their chance, is one way to look at it.
The other thing is, I think the city of Sioux Falls is at three minutes, isn't that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, and so we, yeah, we were mirroring what the city of Sioux Falls does too in other places, so that was some of our thought process, so, okay. Thanks, Tyler. With that, we'll move on to Commission Liaison Reports. Liaison Reports. Go ahead, Commissioner Kersky.
Last Monday or Tuesday, I was in Pierre for the State Annual County Officials, County Commissioners Convention. We had a lot of great presentations, but one of the best was done by Auditor Patience, who was in the evening, had a lot of interest on county financing and forecast modeling for counties. We're doing our best to be good stewards of the rest of the state, and we have more resources, so the fact that we're able to bring something to, for the rest of the state to use, I think is important. We had speakers on leadership, on different licensing, and it was overall a very good and productive state convention. I think there were about, with vendors and everybody there, a little over 400 people attended, so it was a well-attended convention. Next year will be in Sioux Falls, so, yeah, annual meeting, and it went well.
Commissioner Bender?
I just wanted to point out that the last community engagement neighborhood event, Summer Block Party, and today's going to feel like summer, is this Thursday at Linwood Park. All the commissioners are invited to attend, they're looking for volunteers, if anybody's available, and it's from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. I think all the commissioners got a flyer on it, with a number where you can, if you're able to attend, that you can volunteer, but they, these have been great neighborhood events that allow elected officials and law enforcement to interact with folks in that neighborhood. So just wanted to draw that to your attention.
Additional, Commissioner Barrett?
Well, I also was obviously out there in Pierre, and there was quite a bit of discussion about jails and also JDC. I think a lot of, a lot of counties are percolating on those issues right now, and I learned a lot more about heavy equipment for, like, the Highway Department, too, visiting with vendors, but.
Commissioner Benega?
A couple of weeks ago, Commissioner Kersky and I were participating in the Southeast Council of Government Conversation. Most of the presentation was about the continuation of the bike trail long-range plan, which would bring the bike trail to Brandon, believe it or not, which is being supported, I believe, by just about everybody engaged in that conversation. So that'll be a long-range plan, but it definitely is still going in a bright direction, I believe. The other thing is, is I have, because I'm on the liaison to the fair, just have seen some preliminary numbers, and we'll get that presentation in a couple of weeks, but the fair had a very positive financial picture from the events, even if they did have some rain on one of the bigger planning processes that they were, were hopefully going to have, but it looks very promising from what I've seen so far.
Okay, and last week, last week when Commissioner Kersky and Commissioner Barrett were in Pierre, I was at Chamberlain for the State JDAI Committee Meeting. I sit as co-chair on that group, and with the summer study, there's been a lot, there was a summer study on youth and criminal justice this summer, and so that was kind of where we focused our time, too. Talked a lot about the risk assessment instrument, the RAE, because that was one of the topics at summer studies. The risk assessment is maybe misunderstood at times. When a law enforcement detains a youth, if they determine that they shouldn't be released straight to their parent or their guardian, they will do a risk assessment, and that risk assessment really identifies if that child or youth should be held in confinement in the juvenile detention center, or be deferred to our shelter care, or maybe be, have alternatives to detention, maybe home monitoring or electronic monitoring. And the reason we do the risk is there's no court decision in it, and as far as this is, to see if that kid is going to show up for court, determine if this kid will show up for court, or if he is going to reoffend. And our success rates across the state, I think we only have like 16% failure, which is huge when you look at a state level. We did validate the risk assessment instrument in 2016, and it continues to be a very effective tool in how we decide how to deal with our youth after they had a confrontation with law enforcement. And so that is, that was, that was the most of our conversation is, is what is the correct way to deal with youth. We also talked about the alternatives to detention and the diversion, the deflection or diversion program that the state's attorney uses, which has also been a very successful program across the state of South Dakota. For every successful diversion that happens in the county, we're paid by a state fund as reimburses us a significant amount of money. Kids who stay out of juvenile detention centers have a higher rate of staying out of the criminal justice system, so we will, we would like to divert kids that are low-risk, and that is what we've been doing very successfully. Obviously, our most important part is to keep those high-risk kids in a secure detention space where they're safe, and we're working on re-educating them, or trying to get them in therapies, if it's drug treatment or whatever, to keep them on a straight path. We want successful youth and to keep them out of our adult prisons. So a very successful meeting. We have people from across the state that are on that committee, including judges and law enforcement, and we have, we have a wide array of who sits on that committee, so that was my time. If there's no more reports, I would go on to non-action commission discussion, and seeing none, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you for coming. Slate, thank you for coming. Slate, thank you for coming. Slate, thank you for coming.